We'll call the regular meeting of Tuesday, September 20th, 2023 to order. Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Douglas.
Here.
Ms. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Horvath.
Here.
Mrs. Sensi.
Here.
And Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda with a modification of moving the executive session to the front of the meeting?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Trying to get stuff back. Do we have a motion to move into executive session for the purposes of discussing matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, rules, or state statutes?
I'll move.
Any discussion? We are going to move into executive session, then we'll come out of executive session and conduct the meeting, as there will be a brief pause for anybody who's watching from home. Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
All right, we stand in recess. All right, we've returned to executive session. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 22nd, 2023.
I'll move.
One second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Obstand.
And Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there a motion to approve minutes of the regular meeting of September 5th, 2023?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Obstand.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any board members we should give a report to? Reports and recommendations of treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. First up, I would like to recommend, and there is a slight typographical error in the agenda. It lists it as August 2022 on my copy. I'm not sure if it reflects the same on yours. But I would like to recommend the approval of the August 2023 financial statements as listed.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up, I did email out the permanent appropriations. There was, I believe, one change that I made to them, and I think I emailed it back out, but I haven't been able to tonight. I would like to recommend the approval of the permanent appropriations for fiscal year 2024 and the certificate of estimated resources. Basically, it was pretty, it was a pretty conservative process for the permanent appropriations. We know we are going to be getting some more money from the state, however, that money isn't going to hit until the October foundation funding report, and so I tried to stay a little bit conservative on that. I did increase that we are getting more money, and it's also reflective in the pay-to-participate categories, how it was previously voted upon that we were going to raise pay-to-participate and the school fees. So those, and then just our federal grants, I kept right in line with what we receive and what we expend. So I had a discussion with several other treasurers, and since there is kind of this weird odd situation where our permanent appropriations are due as year of September, but we aren't really going to know the final budget until October, I most likely will do a revised appropriations and bring it sometime in October, November, just to have more exact numbers to account, but I'm confident in what we have right now.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, I would like to recommend the approval of the promiscuous donations. A generous donation of book bags and school supplies from American Legion Auxiliary J. Wilson Post 112 to North Elementary School to be used for students and staff needs. A generous donation of $500 from Madison Family Restaurant to Madison Middle School to be used as needed. A generous donation of gift cards from the Wagon Wheel Bar and Restaurant to Madison Middle School to be used for Street of the Moon Awards. And a generous donation of $500 from the Madison Family Restaurant to North Elementary School to be used as needed.
I was gonna say Madison Restaurant, they're just amazing.
They are.
How much they give back.
They are.
I mean, they're the sweetest people, but it's just amazing.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to say thank you to all, everyone that donated. Like you said, Madison Family Restaurant, but so many of them, I mean, are giving multiple times a year, and we really appreciate it. And then I'm sure we probably never actually put it on here, because it wasn't really a donation directly to us, but it was to many of our school kids. Over the summer, towards the end of summer, which are crossroads in church, at that school supply carnival, and they gave out so many book bags and school supplies to so many kids. So we just have a great community when it comes to making sure that our kids have what they need.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes. And that concludes my treasuries.
Reports given straight.
I've got several items this evening. First, I'd like to start by saying next month's meeting is the third Tuesday in October, and it will be at the lecture hall. They are nearing the end of putting together the carpeting and finishing up the walls, so Mr. Brady is confident that we can host our meeting at Madison High School lecture hall. Right now, unless you hear otherwise, we are going to have the meeting at the Madison High School lecture hall.
What is our meeting date there?
The 17th.
How much?
Yeah.
So it's Tuesday the 17th, or is it the 18th?
17th.
17th, okay. All right. Speaking of Reggie Dabs, last week, we had Reggie Dabs on the 11th and 12th, and he was very, very well received within the community. We had about 250, I think, people come to the evening presentation, and they were very impressed by that. I think the pizza that we gave away that evening, cookies and water, also helped. The, I think we had like one pizza left at the end of the night, and out of the 15 pizzas from G-licious in Manner, so it was a really good evening, really positive. It was really special to have him here. I did print off the front pages of the school report card for everybody, for the district and for the each individual building. There were many improvements throughout, but the highlight for me was the North Elementary School report card. I have to say that this year, they just, in achievement, progress, and gap closing, they were top in the district. They had four stars in achievement, progress was five stars, and gap closing was five stars. And they no longer are calculating on a percentage of achievement tests, but fifth grade over there had 80% passage in each of the tests.
You sent this with North Madison?
Yeah, North Elementary, not Madison.
Yes, 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 yes. North Elementary, and this was from last year.
Correct.
And a big shout out to their leadership over there. Who is the principal?
Mr. Baker and Mrs. Solar.
Very good.
Yeah. And South Elementary had four stars, so they were right behind, and, you know, working with our middle and high school again to continue on the path of continuous improvement. But overall, we came, we were three and a half stars as far as our rating. We've got some work to do, but I was very pleased with how things turned out. Our big focus at the high school continues to be the graduation rate, so.
What do you see that is stopping it right now?
We had a lot from COVID with the graduation rate, so I think we're gonna, and the transition to the seals, I think, is going to help. We are gonna work with doing the Ohio means job readiness seal with like all our students between junior and senior year, so that they all have that seal, because that's one of the seals that they can use in lieu of some test scores. So, and it's always been part of, you know, we've never had more than a 94% graduation rate here in Madison since I've been here.
And what percentage do they want us at?
They, we should be at a 93, 94 to get five stars.
Okay, and what are we at right now?
Right now, we're at two from 20, and it reports from the year before, so this isn't last year's.
Okay.
So.
This is COVID years.
Yes.
Okay.
Last year's, I think, is still gonna be around this two to three star. We are in a program called Each Child on Track, so we are working on interventions that we can use to improve that graduation rate. We have some money coming from the state, so that we are looking at what are some things we can do to help these students, our most at-risk students? Because the students that are going to do it, they don't need that additional support. It's our most at-risk students. What is it that we can do to keep them engaged in school, to keep them on track for graduation?
So, for example, last year's class, were we at like, what, 88% or something like that for last year, do you remember?
It was, yeah, between 86, 87. We're in the midst of calculating that right now.
Okay.
Because, again, they don't calculate it pure. It's, you know, move in, move out, and how that all impacts. So I'll have a better idea where we're at in another month.
So right now, I will say, like, within just the first few weeks of school, my daughter is a junior, and I emailed her counselor and said, can you let me know with the classes that she has right now, what she needs to take for graduation? Where is she at? And although I did not really feel that there was a concern with her, we occasionally hear that, like, you know, a parent will say, well, I didn't know my child, you know, was, you know. So I would encourage parents to reach out to the guidance counselor, make sure that their kid is on track, so they know where their kid is. But are, at what point are our guidance counselors looking at and reaching out? Are they waiting until that senior year?
No. They, they have multiple checkpoints throughout the year. They start the year with seniors, because those are the seniors that, you know, if they need to do credit recovery, or if they're still not where they are with seals. So they start with seniors, and then they go to the next class and work all the way through. So part of our plan that we've talked about with Each Child on Track is that we need to really target those freshmen. So at the end of the first semester, we need to be looking at those freshmen that, okay, you've not hit a couple, you might have failed a class, or you're behind in, you know, credits already. We're gonna get you caught up, you know? We need you to work towards your seals, because most of our tests are given in the sophomore year, so why not work on getting some seals that will help check off some of these graduation requirements? And it's work, you know? And we have two counselors and three administrators, and how we use that team to pull it together. And so that's what we are going to be working on through this grant and providing some of these interventions. And keeping kids in school. One of the things that will help us that did improve, and it's not an indicator here for the academic piece, but it is something that we, we've talked about is the attendance. And we made 3% gains as a district on chronic absenteeism, because during COVID, kids weren't coming to school. So now they're coming back to school, and we're following up and making sure they stay in school.
Did we do this year, I remember last year, right before school, that the principals all reached out to kids that were at, you know, 18 days or whatever it is. Did we do that this year?
I don't know if they reached out by phone that way, but they're reaching out as we go now, yes. We want you in school, and you need to be here. We're, we're trying, again, for those kids that have behavior problems, finding ways to keep them in school and not removing them from the situation.
I notice that we, in the high school, it's, you know, we're real low on this college career workforce thing and stuff. You know, I, I would love to work whatever, you know, to be part of that, to make that happen, because, you know, that's my thing, of getting people into the workforce and stuff.
Absolutely.
You know, and I don't know what we can do to get that up, but I, you know, I just think maybe we could have some meetings with the ministry, you know, and see how we can get that where we need to do.
No, I, I agree with you, and that's something that we are working on. Part of it is, is how they measure it. They keep changing the way they calculate it. So there's now data that they're holding us accountable for once they leave our doors. There's the SAT, ACT data, which every student takes. Getting kids to take more credentials, 12-point credentials, so that they can go out and be job-ready.
Does each kid have to take SAT and ACT?
They have to take the ACT.
It's a requirement?
It was a requirement. We, I think we still have to give it. I don't think they changed it, but it doesn't count. Used to count as a pathway for achievement, so, but we still have to give it.
Okay, I didn't, I just, is that in the sophomore or what year is that? Is that?
Junior year.
Junior year?
Yeah. We give it in this late winter, junior, either February or early March.
Because I know some kids, if they know they're not going to college or whatever, they don't really care for that. I mean, you know, especially if they're going the trades ways or whatever, it's not as important for them.
Right. So, but we continue to work on these things, and, you know, the goal is, as I said, the most important thing we do is graduate kids, so, you know, we don't hit that mark. That, that one I take personally, because I have worked very hard with some students that were very difficult to get across that stage, but we get them across that stage, so.
But you very much enjoyed a success story this past night, I remember.
There's a lot of them in my career.
Yeah.
I do also want to share with you a preview of what I'll be talking about next week at the Lake County State of the Schools address through the Eastern Chaver. I think Jeff is attending. But, so Fairford, Painesville City, Perry, Madison, and Auburn will be doing a, we have about five to seven minutes to talk about what we're doing in the way of career pathways. So my focus is how we take our connections and partnerships to pave pathways to careers. And I'm highlighting our Advanced Manufacturing 1 and Advanced Manufacturing 2 program. Brian's in the, in the pictures in one of the slides, because last year, he even spoke to that group.
Oh, very good.
Good, Brian, take a good side.
I think you have the same shirt on today.
But, you know, we're talking about that curriculum and what we put into that. I highlight some of the other partnerships that we have, you know, through our community, the Alliance for Working Together, how our Ecology Club works with local nurseries. We have a great partnership with Rabbit Run, the public library. We have our student room branch of the Lake County Educational Federal Credit Union. And this year, we have 113 students attending Auburn for career training. And so that, they have 899 enrolled, so we're at about 12 and a half percent of their enrollment. Then I focus too on what Tim Pira and Kelly Chandler have been doing with the Environmental Science and Ecology Club, you know, and that collaboration. I do want to put up Spanish, so I'm gonna correct that slide for Jennifer tomorrow. But what some of those unique collaborations and opportunities that have had, because we've had kids, you know, work with our state, you know, the congressman, Representative Joyce was with our students back a couple weeks ago. The Department of Wildlife, that was a big thing. US, no, US Forest Service. And, you know, how they're doing that tagging project with the Modus Towers. So there's a lot of good things happening in our district or our students at all levels. Excuse me. So that will be the focus of my presentation, but I wanted to share it with you here tonight. Let's see. Tonight, our band is at the Lake County Band Show out at Manner. It's a miracle, because I think the last couple years, it's been rained out, and they have a beautiful night for it. So they're very lucky, because last year, I think they canceled on the threat of rain, and then it never rained. So the band has been very busy, and they also have Great Gentry and a home football game Friday night. And our football team is 4-1 going into our first competition within the conference against Lakeside Friday night. So they've had a heck of a start. I think they're, they're all pumped and very, very excited. And that, I think, is everything in my report this evening. I will move right on to the recommendations, if that's okay. All right. Under the employment motion this evening, we have several items. We're, we're asking you to approve the unpaid leave request of Ashley Glovna, North Elementary School Special Education Assistant, beginning September 25th and ending November 6th. We're asking you to enter into the following employment contracts. The following substitute teachers is approved by the Educational Service Center, under the Madison Local School District's Assistant Superintendent. Under a one-year limited substitute teacher contract, beginning, beginning with Olivia Fay, and ending with Brionne Swift. The following person reaches a casual day-to-day substitute at the board-approved rate, beginning with Hayden Durzik and ending with Paul Turner. To employ Paul Turner as a building substitute at South Elementary School, effective September 19th, 2023, because remember, people can be under two lists. To employ Paula Fiorino as an educational assistant cafeteria at Madison Middle School for three and a half hours per day, effective September 14th. To employ Lori Silva as an educational assistant playground at South Elementary for three hours per day, effective September 19th. The following person under a one-year contract as a preschool instructor, Elizabeth Maholic at $25 per hour. The following non-certificated persons under a one-year limited personal service contract for the 23, 24 school year. Stephanie Polling as MHS Major Ed Advisor, and Erin Cicero as South Elementary Student Council Advisor. We're asking you to amend the following supplemental contracts, to amend the teacher supplemental contract of Emily Brown to, for National Honor Society, for, to reflect seven years of experience. To amend the teacher supplemental contract of Joe Meisel as Infinite Campus Coach, and we're amending the salary at $1,037. To amend a teacher supplemental contract of Jackie Berry, North Elementary, Infinite Campus Coach, to amend the salary of $1,037. To amend teacher supplemental contract of Becky Barton, Madison Middle School Yearbook Advisor, at the salary of $1,660. To amend teacher supplemental contract of Amy Christ, Madison Middle School Advisor, at the salary of $1,660. And to amend the contract, supplemental contract of Kesley Gray, North MNG School Math Club Advisor, to six, for $622. Okay. I'm gonna pull that one and bring it back, because I'm not sure what she meant by that. So I'm gonna pull it, I apologize. I did read this, and I didn't read that extra amount on the end. I think it's the 622, but I want to be accurate. Then we're asking you to recall Holly Pade as People's Services Secretary at a rate of $21 per hour, and to transfer Doug Sanford from People's Services Secretary to Accounts Payable at the same rate of compensation for, beginning September 18th. And to transfer Kayla DeFranco from a three-hour position as an educational assistant playground at South Elementary to a 3.7 and a quarter-hour position, or three and three-quarters hour position at, as a nutrition services cashier at South Elementary, effective September 11th.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
And Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Before we go left, do you want me to get you a little bit of water right quick?
I can do the first one.
There's some in here.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I think the allergies, I apologize.
Well, you're okay. Get that swab first, okay? Thank you, John.
All right. Under the consent calendar, we have several things this evening to approve. The following volunteers, coaches for the 2023 school, 2023, 24 school year, and it's all for robotics, beginning with Mark Winter and ending with Greg May. To approve a Washington DC, DC Mount Vernon Estate trip scheduled for March 15th through 17th for the MHS 11th and 12th grade students at a cost of $485 per student. To approve a Washington DC Mount Vernon Estate trip for April 17th, 19th for the eighth graders at a cost of $475 per student. To approve an out-of-state trip for the Madison High School Model UN team at a cost of $400 per student between December 7th and 10th and 2020, between December 7th and 10th. And that, none of these trips are at a cost of the board. And to approve a resolution declaring transportation impractical is found on file at the board office, and that is for students being transported to schools outside the area.
I'll move. One second.
Any discussion?
Is it, I have a quick question. Are all the 11th and 12th graders going, or what class?
It's, it's whoever wants to go.
Oh, really?
So Mr. Brady wanted to give these students an opportunity to go to DC, since they did not get a chance from COVID.
Oh, I forgot about that, yes.
So he wanted to do that trip.
Oh, that's, that's a great, yes.
So.
Mr. Brady has a soft spot, doesn't he?
Once in a while, you see that in him. And it, it is a little bit more, because probably fewer students are gonna end up going, because junior and senior year. But there are some kids that may never have had that experience, and he's providing that opportunity for them.
I'll be interested to see how many go.
And Brady will go with them, right?
Oh, yeah. Brady will go with them.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mention this earlier, but like, for these kids that are like at risk for graduation.
Yes.
Even like you're saying, starting in ninth grade, is there a way to set up like a Manner program or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, that's part of this grant. So we can, yeah, we can definitely do that.
I got wind of one kid that, we engaged, so, because that's just, you gotta do that.
Right, exactly. You gotta connect.
Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Mrs. Sensi.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Douglas.
Yes.
And Ms. Hayes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we have motion for adjournment? So we have motion for adjournment?
I just got skipped.
Roll call.
And Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Horvath?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sensi?
Yes.